Welcome to the January 8th, 2013 regular session of the school committee. At this time, we'd ask that you stand for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please have a seat. This time, I'd ask all to observe a moment of silence for our troops serving overseas. Thank you and good evening. I'd like to begin with the superintendent's update, share the success. The Robert Frost Middle School accepted a generous gift from our friends at the Patriot Raytheon Conglomerate. They held fundraisers and bake sales throughout the year. They presented a check, a gift card in the amount of $1,200 to Principal Ellen Baranowski and literacy coach Gary Katzel on behalf of the students at the Frost Middle School. The gift card will be used to purchase electronic equipment such as MP3 players, on which electronic books will be uploaded to promote the enjoyment of reading. Student reporters Anthony Thai, Elisa Berube, and Leslie Lima interviewed our benefactors for a story which will be featured in the next edition of the Frost newspaper, The Frost Flash. Please stay tuned for that. Congratulations to them. The Patriot Raytheon Group, by the way, is the Patriot Missile Special Operations Group and the Raytheon International Air Defense Center. All local folks who are doing great work on behalf of our country. We also want to congratulate the Arlington Elementary School, who's been awarded a Target Field Trip Grant of $700. Thank you to Heather Langaloy, who's the art teacher at the school, for completing the application. Thanks to the grant students, we'll be going to York Wild Animal Kingdom later in the spring. That's from Heidi Price, the principal of the school there. We want to talk to you briefly about the SEI recertification update. As a result of the Department of Justice inquiry, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts mandated a comprehensive model that includes more training for our teachers and administrators who work with ELL students in order to close proficiency gaps. The model is called RETAIL, which stands for Rethinking Equity and Teaching for English Language Learners, that includes a new licensure component. As of July 2014, all educators seeking a license from the state must have the SEI endorsement to be eligible to teach. In most cases, it's a 50-hour coursework commitment. Current teachers and teacher supervisors must obtain this SEI endorsement in order to renew, advance, or extend their license. So this is a really important license that our teachers have to get. Recognizing the extensive training required, the DSE adopted a Train the Trainer model to provide sufficient training for all teachers in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. They developed a special program and went through a rigorous application process seeking out some of the best teachers in Massachusetts to become these lead trainers. We're pleased to announce that Lawrence will have the capacity to ensure our workforce has the opportunity to learn and to get this endorsement right here. Many RETAIL instructors come from the Lawrence Public Schools, including Kristen Ando, a third-grade teacher at the South Lawrence East Elementary School; Jennifer Mason, an ESL teacher at the Arlington Middle School; Mary DeSimone, an ESL teacher at the Partha Middle School; Lori Hartwick, an ESL teacher at HHS; Erin DiNacola, an ESL teacher at the Frost Middle School; Lisa Alonso, an ESL teacher at INT; Allison Balter, an ESL teacher at Unlocking Potential; and Heidi Perez, the ESL facilitator at our central office. Congratulations to all. They'll be working with UMass Lowell on this accomplishment. And they will then, after be trained, they will then go out and train our teachers here in Lawrence. So it's quite an honor for those teachers. We want to thank them and honor their efforts. Before moving on to the receivers' update, I think it's critical, given what happened recently in Connecticut, to talk about safety issues and how they impact the Lawrence Public Schools. I want to say that I think the Lawrence Public Schools are clearly ahead of the curve on all things safety. Beginning before this incident took place last year, we increased the number of safety officers in our schools. Almost all schools have a buzzer system, all but two. Those two that do not have a buzzer system will be getting one, one as early as next week, and the other one will be happening in the spring. But those schools have school safety officers manned at the front doors. Unlike many communities in the Merrimack Valley, we have put a lot of resources into our safety protocols. And so we are pleased with what's happening and what we will continue to do. School committee members and the general public should remember that we do bi-monthly drills with our students. All schools have crisis plans in place every year. Again, we hired more officers at the beginning of this year. Each school has a crisis team in place and is matched up with a member from central office to work with them. We've replaced 30 DVR recording devices, which are attached to our school cameras. Again, many schools in the Merrimack Valley don't even have such cameras, and we've replaced all of ours. We've replaced over 45 cameras as of last year, and the work continues. I mentioned earlier that all but two schools have buzzer systems, and those two schools have school police, school safety officers manning them. And they will get a buzzer system installed in the upcoming months. Additionally, we work with our friends at the Lawrence Police Department, who provide four school resource officers, three who float across the district, these are armed, traditional police officers, and one who is stationed at the high school. Underscoring all that, I think the strength of Lawrence Public Schools' safety plans, despite its attention to detail, is the relationships that the adults have with the kids here. And, you know, I think that work is an ongoing, daily occurrence, which makes sure that our kids are safe. There's been a lot of discussion, given the tragedy that's happened. We're pleased to tell you that we think we are well ahead of the curve as far as safety in the schools of Lawrence. With that said, I'd open it up to any questions about that, given the gravity of the situation.
Yes, Mr. Riley. You stole my thunder, sir. I was going to talk about that up there. It's tragedy. I proposed many years ago, the kids walked through metal detectors. I was laughed at. And Nutty Jim wants to put our students at risk. No, I'm not putting the students at risk. What happened there was a tragedy. It's a wake-up call. When you have 36 human beings, 20 children, and six female teachers. Imagine a female teacher showing up running at a nut that has a gun with their hands up, had no shot. I'm saying to you, sir, I don't think the Lawrence Public Schools are doing enough. Years ago, I proposed that you walk through metal. No, we can't do that to our children. They're good kids. Not all children are good. Now, we've seen this nut in Connecticut. He was a child. He wasn't good. Am I overreacting? Yes, I am overreacting because I saw the faces of those 20 innocent children. And the six female teachers and principals, they're running at the nutty gunman with their hands up. Your hands aren't going to stop bullets. I have a lot of respect for you, Mr. Riley, but I don't think the system has gone far enough. These are 20 children that will be lost. They could have become doctors, principals. One of them might have had your job in Connecticut if their schools were having it. It's always good to talk, and we become reactionary. We don't look upfront. After something happens, it seems in this country, we've got to do this, we've got to do that. I'm, I know I have no power. I can just talk. I think the Lawrence Public Schools have to do a better job. Will it ever happen, Lawrence? I hope not. I'm not God. I don't know. The high school, I have complained that kids go over across the street. I've said that several times. No one listens. I've stopped going over there and looking for kids. I think something personally, maybe I'm way off base. 20 precious children. They could have been one of our kids, not one of them over the age of seven. Something has to be done. All the talk in the world is not going to protect children. I was ridiculed many years ago when I wanted to have a system where the children would walk through a scan. No, that's invasion of privacy. What privacy? To save your life and those of your students? I'm saying to you, I'm not being critical. I have no right to be critical. You're the boss, and I understand that, sir. But what I am saying, and I'm saying it emphatically, I don't think you and the school system is going far enough. Imagine if you are a parent of one of those 20 children. How do you ever survive? How do you ever survive? So again, I know I have no power. I thank you for having these meetings once a month. I'm saying to you emphatically, it's just me, I don't talk for anybody else. What we need to do is more. Like I said years ago, I was crucified because I wanted to have a system in Lawrence High go through a thing. No, that's an invasion of privacy. Now, kids, you're making them out to be John Dillinger. No, I'm not making them out to be John Dillinger. I just want safety in our public schools. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vittorio So. Other thoughts, comments from the school committee? We will continue to update going forward on the work that continues to be done. As I said, much of this work was put in place, if not all of it, was put in place ahead of this tragedy because we do take safety so seriously for our students. With that said, we're going to switch gears and move to the update. At this time, we'd ask Shalimar Keles to come up and talk about the Building Connections event that took place with our principals and the local partners across the city.
One of the bright stars you brought in, Mr. Riley, one of the bright stars.
Thank you, Superintendent Riley, school committee. So as part of our goal to combine the best of Lawrence with the best of the Commonwealth, we organized this event, Building Connections, with the Lawrence Public Schools, where we invited 35 community partners to connect with all of our principals here in the Lawrence Public Schools. So principals and community partners connected in various three-minute networking rounds, if you would. And as to provide a visual to you all, it was sort of, the format was resembled much of a speed dating event. So the object, again, was twofold. It was to assist principals in building a familiar network of providers and to afford organizations to the opportunity to learn about ways they can support principals and ultimately help shape how these schools deliver instruction to all of the students of Lawrence. The event took place at Lawrence High School on January 3rd. So there should be photos and videos up on the website. The media team took the opportunity to interview folks during the event. So it's helpful to, again, give you guys a visual. So overall, we feel like the event was pretty successful. We received an overwhelming amount of positive praise from both principals and community partners. So I'm happy to take questions if there are any.
I have several with the consent of Mr. Riley.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. If I'm mistaken, you will please correct me. Your job specifically is to help teachers be better trained than what they are. Is that correct or noncorrect? Then what is, I know your job title. What does your job title entail?
Go ahead, Mr. Riley.
My, my job title?
Yes, yes, please.
So my title is Scholar Reengagement Manager. So
Repeat that, please.
The Scholar Reengagement Manager. So I help, I'm helping the school, the high school specifically with trying to support students to prevent them from dropping out. That's sort of my primary focus, but I do admire it of things as well.
Now, you said, and I've never been a principal or a guidance counselor, thanks to the demonic people who are over me. Now, you said principals. Now, that goes off in my head. Why only principals again? Why not help the ones on the front line, the teachers? You said specifically that you, if I'm wrong, you will correct me. I make millions of mistakes, and I admit to them. You specifically said principals. You did not mention teachers. Why?
So I think the event had, the principals each brought a teacher from their building to meet the partners. I should fail to mention that in the presentation, but we had teachers at the event as well. So every principal brought a staff member from the building who could get this information as well. Your other question, though, is an insightful one, which is, Shalimar's job here is primarily to make sure our kids get across the stage at graduation. But as you know, with the unfortunate accident of my chief of staff
How's she feeling?
She's doing better. She's got a long rehabilitation. And we're hopeful that she may be able to come back sometime next year. With all of that said, certain duties that were under her purview have been parsed out to different members of the team. And this is one such area where Ms. Keles was able to take over and see this event through that took place over the vacation, where principals invited a staff member to come with them, and we appreciate their time to meet with the different partner organizations inside Lawrence so that they have a better understanding of resources that are out there to support our kids.
I'm going to say this and get in trouble, but I really don't care, not at my age. I think the principals, and not with you, but prior to your coming, are a privileged class in this school system. And I'll say that until the day I go join my mother. For some reason, I don't know where it starts from, to me, they are a privileged class, and the teachers are subservient. I don't see any, any principal get scrutinized as much as I see teachers get scrutinized. And most of the principals you got were teachers. And they were fairly good teachers. But I get the feeling, once you get up there, you forget your roots. And I'll say this emphatically, until the day I go with my mother.
Well, I would say, Mr. V, that, as you know, when I first came in last year, we looked closely at the teaching staff, and we looked at about 3% of the teaching force that we thought wasn't doing a good job by our kids. By the same token, we replaced a lot of principals.
God bless you.
Almost one-third of the principals were replaced. I can't speak to what happened in the past. There are people on this committee that certainly can. What I would say is, we try to look at people as individuals, not as, you know, these are just principals. I was more interested in the quality of the work. I can say emphatically that we have a great team of principals in the Lawrence Public Schools right now.
Shalimar. Jimmy, are you finished?
Not yet, Patricia.
Oh, sorry.
Patricia, please. I would say thank you for all that you said. And I personally admire what you're doing because I've, for years, have believed that the principals have been a protected class, and the teachers aren't. And I have several teachers, don't mention my name, please, don't mention my, I said I don't mention names. Fear, fear, Mr. Riley. But I like your attitude and that. You're a young lady, you're doing well. I still hope you have my name on your yearbook. You haven't destroyed it yet. But I think you're doing a good job, the both of you. It just bothers me that there's fear. I'll never mention any teacher that calls me, please, please, there is fear out there. And that's all I'm going to say. Thank you. Go ahead, Patricia.
Shalimar, just a quick question. Could you describe maybe one or two partners that were present that day? And what will their roles be with the different schools?
Absolutely. That's a great question. So we can definitely get the full list of partners out to each of you. But folks like the Essex Arts Center were there, Acting Out Theater Group were present, the Youth Development Organization. Again, I don't, I haven't memorized the full list, but we can definitely get it out to each of you.
And are they going to be involved in an after-school program? Or are they going to be doing tutoring during the day? Are there, are there different roles that they'll serve within the schools?
There was a myriad of organizations there, from the YMCA to the Boys and Girls Club to, you know, the art organizations, to counseling organizations. What this was, was just a chance for the principals, because there are many new principals in the district, to learn the different resources that are out there across the district. Frankly, some of our veteran principals have never had the opportunity to meet some of these folks. What comes out of that? Some of that may happen during, when schools expand their learning day, where they may pick up partners. Some of that just may happen when a situation arises with a student, and now they know that they can call this health center and get the kid glasses or something like that. So this was just kind of the opening salvo to get people to understand who else is living in the community and working in the community that could be a support for the schools.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Today, we had an opportunity to visit the Fifth Academy at the South Lawrence East Complex for a ribbon-cutting ceremony. We were privileged to be one of three school districts in Massachusetts awarded a $100,000 fitness center based on the application of that school that incorporates a longer school day and more academics with more fitness activities for the kids. We had Coca-Cola and other representatives come and do a ribbon-cutting ceremony. I asked if Mr. Santos or Mrs. Cirillo, who were there, or Ms. Mariano, would like to speak on it briefly.
Go ahead, Patricia.
Well, I came in a little bit late. I missed the, most of the presentation. But it was a very, very dynamic, enthusiastic group. The kids were very, very excited. And the facility itself is state-of-the-art. I have never seen anything like it. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for the kids. And I'm dying to see how this plays out throughout the course of the year.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, the facility is amazing, better than most gyms, even better than the gym I go to. What I'm interested in seeing, how are the test scores with the kids with the new activity and moving forward? That's something really interesting. Plus, they had the step team that we'll definitely have to see again, and as well expanded to other schools.
We will try to bring the step team here before school committee for a performance. I know the kids are anxious to perform for the school committee.
Hopefully, we can get Mr. V to perform with them.
If he's up for it, absolutely.
I will make sure I'm up for it, even if I have to get wheeled out from the hospital. Just give me a date, Mr. Cirillo.
I think in the future, I hope more, more school, more, more place, we can find more. It's like a gym, but it was very, very interesting.
So given our financial situation, you know, we're out there day and night looking for these kind of grants. We think that we can be real competitive in winning these grants and that come from private foundation dollars, knowing that, you know, the school system is currently not funded at the level it's supposed to be and is in, you know, some financial distress. We will continue to search out these type of opportunities. Along those lines, on Thursday, the Boston Celtics will be unveiling the new gym at the Bruce School. This is another application partnership from our work with the Celtics, who will be bringing out Celtics players to talk to the kids about their experiences in college and in the pros. And it was an opportunity for us to get the gym done over and paid for by the Celtics Foundation. So that will be on Thursday. We hope to have pictures and video of that up for you in the coming days. Family engagement update. Ms. Mariano and other folks on the committee had talked about going out and doing an event at one of the schools. We did talk to the Oliver School, and there is a PTA meeting coming up on Thursday, February 24th, at 2013. And I didn't know if that date would work with folks, when we could go out and begin this process to see, talk about the turnaround plan with parents and kind of use it as a test case for the PowerPoint.
Is there, is there any way, Superintendent, if we could maybe test it a little bit sooner? Like, I'm thinking, this is the beginning of January, we're going to go to the, almost the end of February. By the time we finish the cycle of all the schools, we're going to be near the end of the year. And it's going to lose, I think it's going to lose the impact. Is there any way we could do something in January with a cluster, maybe with two or three schools?
I think we may be able to do something. We looked particularly at the Oliver, because that, I think, was on the minds of certain members of the school committee. With that said, their next PTA real meeting is in February. So perhaps we could talk to the other schools and see if they have something earlier and/or do a cluster approach. We can get back to you on that ASAP.
What time is the PTA meeting on Thursday, the 4th?
I think it's in the morning at 9 o'clock. Oh, 8:30, I apologize. So we'll get back to you. Maybe we should try to do both, I don't know, but
I'd be interested, just to, you know, just to go out and try it.
Okay. The family information center, the facility folks have done a good job of moving HR out of our first floor. We are in the process of moving folks down, so that should be operational in the next few weeks. We look forward in February for you guys, or earlier, to come down and see that. It'll be a process for parents to come right on the street level to get all the information they need, whether it's registration, or about students with special needs, or busing, or what have you. It would be kind of a very easy way for parents to get the information they need going forward. So we're excited about that. At this time, I'd ask the Frost Middle School principal, Ellen Baranowski, to come up. One of the things we'd like to do here at school committee is to bring different schools up to talk about their programming. As you know, you've seen many of the new EMO schools that have come on board. You've got a chance to meet with those principals. Tonight, you get to meet a more veteran principal of Lawrence, who is one of two Level One schools in the district, who has been cited for the huge gains in test scores and for a lot of the good things that are happening. So she's going to give you a short presentation, and she'll take any questions. Ms. Ellen Baranowski.
Thank you, Superintendent Riley, and thank you, school committee, for inviting me this evening. I am very, very pleased to be here representing our assistant principal, Jean Zambruski, and the staff at the Robert Frost Middle School, as well as the students and the parents. Recently, Mr. Riley sent out a report card to parents to describe how things looked last year on the MCAS test as compared to 2011 as well. And we were very, very pleased with the results that we received in 2012, that we worked towards in 2012. We are, at this point, very, very close to the state average in terms of, well, what we consider very close to the state average, in terms of CPI for ELA and for math. Our attendance is above the state average, slightly above, and we're very proud of that, as well as the number of days that we have teacher attendance, the teacher absences are below the state average. So we're working very hard to make sure that the message is out there in our school community that you need to be in school to learn. That's a big message that we give every single day. I make a lot of parent phone calls during the day to absent students' houses and speak to parents. Our school counselor is very, very much involved with that as well. So we're trying to do a more hands-on approach to the attendance. And this year, we've seen a very good gain in our attendance, as I think is going to be higher than last year. So, so far, that's been working for us. One of the things that we have that I consider a great advantage at the Frost Middle School is that we have very little staff turnover. And there's a lot of consistency within the middle school. The kids who go through middle school know what to expect the next year. We have events that take place in our schools, such as the Humanities Exhibition, that will be taking place in February this year. You'll all be invited to attend that. We have an evening opening of that exhibition as well. And I know we have had several school committees in the past attend that. But the kids know that's coming up. The sixth graders know what they'll be doing in seventh grade, and the seventh graders in eighth grade. And it's one of the things that keeps the kids interested in, you know, making sure they're there for the next year. We have a lot of parents who have talked about moving out of the district and that their children do not want to move out of the district, and we're always thrilled to hear that because we, we want to have that retention rate be as high as we can. We know that there is success when we have the same kids in front of us that we've been teaching for years. So to that end, I would say that that's one of our, one of the booms for our school, one of the things that works for us. We feel that we partner in that success with the parents and with the students, and we include them in that conversation. We talk to the kids a lot about where they are and where they need to be and how to get there. When we have, for instance, map testing or TestWiz data, we share it with the kids, we share it with the parents. We talk about that a lot. One of the things that I've brought this evening to leave with you, and I'll leave it with the secretary to give you, is our Frost Flash that you alluded to earlier, our school newspaper. In that newspaper, this edition that we put out in the, the school system supports that they print that for us, and it's really very impressive, I'm sure you'll like it a lot. But in that newspaper, we talk about what it means to be a Level One school. And we had student reporters who interviewed a lot of people within the school to find out what their thoughts are on that. Cafeteria workers were interviewed, different teachers, different people who work in the school. It's, it's a major effort that we all participate in. And I guess that's the big message that we give at the Frost, that we are all part of this, we're all part of the success, we're all responsible for moving everybody forward. It's one of the things that works for us very much. So I guess just that commitment to knowing where we are and where we need to be, I would say contributes most to our success.
Thank you so much. Any questions?
Yes, I, go ahead. I'll yield to the lady.
You're lining up with the questions.
You're lining up. First of all, I'd like to commend Principal Baranowski, the staff, the whole Frost community. As a former principal, I know how difficult it is to achieve that goal. And I think the hard work of his staff and the entire community is a reflection of the, the test scores just proved themselves. Um, my question to the superintendent, um, has the district developed any kind of a plan to replicate what is happening at the Frost in the other middle schools?
So, we have not developed a specific plan. We, uh, certainly have encouraged collaboration amongst schools like the Frost or the South Lawrence East Elementary School, schools that are Level One or high-performing, um, to understand the ingredients that go into making a high-performing school. And those discussions take place, both formally and informally, throughout the year at principal meetings.
Okay.
I have questions, sir. Uh, congratulations, Ms. Baranowski, you're only one of two schools that have achieved level. My question to you might be a hard one. Why not the other schools? What makes you and the South Lawrence East Middle exceptional? And you are, according to what Mr. Riley said, you're the only two leveled schools in the city, which is amazing. Uh, what do you do and your teachers do? I, I think I know the answer, but I'm going to let you try to give it to me. Why we only have two leveled schools, and congratulations, why your school and the South Lawrence East Middle? What are you doing different than the other schools are not doing?
Well, I appreciate that, uh, Mr. Vittorio. So, I would say that, um, in my opinion, one of the things that Mary Toomey and I have in common is that we have both been, uh, doing this job for quite some time. And I don't know that there is any, um, any way around that, just the fact that I have been there since 2001. I know Mary Toomey's been at the South Lawrence East, I believe, since, uh, ninety-nine or 2000. Um, we've had a chance to, um, really establish a culture in our, in both of our schools, in each of our schools, um, where we can, um, you know, we have a culture of collaboration, both of us do. I know that she does as well, having worked for Mary Toomey for, for some time as well. Um, you know, that needs to develop. It doesn't happen overnight, and it needs some time. It's, it's planting a seed, and it needs some time to grow.
And what I think you're saying, you will correct me if I'm wrong, like, uh, the other millions of people do. The longer you're in the situation, the better it is, test scores and parents. Being there, you and the one over the South Lawrence East Middle School, you're, you're saying part of your success is your longevity as principal in those two schools? That has a small part to play with it?
Um, I would, I would only answer for myself, um, but yes, I, in, in terms of what I feel has been, um, one of the things that boosts my success as a principal is the fact that the staff knows me well, the students know me well, the parents know me well. I know the staff, students and parents well, i- in turn. So, we're able to, um, in all of those cases, with all of those cohorts, we're able to, um, really accentuate the positive. And, um, you know, I, I know what to expect and what's coming. There aren't too, too many, um, things that happen now that are big surprises to me, because I've been doing this job for some time. It's like any other job. You need time to, to cultivate things, and that's what we're doing at our school.
What's the average length of service for your teachers in your school, in number of years? What's their average, uh, length of service? All your teachers combined into one?
Uh, well, I, I don't have that information in front of me, but...
We can get that for you, Mr. V. We can get you that information.
Well, I, I, I have to congratulate you. A lot of principals say I'm a crucifier. No, I'm not a crucifier. I'm a pragmatist. And I got to congratulate you and the lady from the South Lawrence East Middle School. And if I was the superintendent of schools, I would be very leery of why the others, uh, middle schools in this city are not producing. And, uh, I would have to say it's the principal, the teachers, and the important role that the parents play. Because, you know, in, in the system that has two outstanding schools and the rest are toddling, there's something wrong. Thank you for your time.
Any other questions from other members of the committee?
Not a question, more of a comment. It's actually the South Lawrence East Elementary that is Level One. The South Lawrence East Middle was Level Four.
Thank you. It's always good to have a younger, uh, member tell you you're wrong. Thank you, James.
Thank you, Ms. Baranowski.
Thank you.
Before moving on to final questions and then going to public participation, as, uh, has typically been the case over the last few months, uh, I'd ask Chris Molino to come up and speak about facilities. Um, I'd like to begin, uh, somewhere back a little bit and remind this committee that the school department, uh, was not given the full extent of its funding last year. Uh, it did not meet its net school spending requirement. In fact, we shorted almost three and a half million dollars. With that said, it, the city has, uh, agreed to restore about $780,000 in capital improvement projects to help fix some of the, the schools and buildings that adds to the work that we've already done so far. And, uh, with that said, Mr. Molino's here today to talk to you about some of the more, work being done, uh, that continues to be done, excuse me, in these public schools.
Good evening, school committee members. To now be providing a facilities update. Um, with the $780,000 of the capital reserve funds, we'll be, uh, replacing windows at the Bruce School. We'll be doing, uh, boiler replacement at the Bruce School and the Breen School. We'll be replacing flooring at the auditorium at the North Common Education Facility and replacing the flooring at the Breen School. Also, we have assessed the amount of broken windows throughout the district. We'll be working on getting security screens installed in many of the schools. And currently working on the specifications for the following projects. Um, these following projects that I just mentioned will take place in the next two to three months. Um, over the December vacation, we finished many flooring jobs, um, such as the South Lawrence East, the Pathem. And also, we, uh, installed a lock system at the Frost School. Um, and pretty much that's where we're at right now, in its ongoing list and as funding's available.
Questions for Mr. Molino?
Yes, I do. You're doing an excellent job. On these windows that have the screens over them, you know what I mean?
Yes.
Now, say, God forbid, there's a fuego, a fire. Are those easily come off those screens? Because I know in some schools across the country, they're like, in certain countries I've been to, the windows, they have the windows, then you have, uh, steel bars over them. Is it easy to get through?
It is easy to get through. Uh, the Lawrence Housing Authority is currently using the same screen that we're looking at.
Okay.
So, they're in residential homes also. It's just a very thick gage screen, will prevent a rock or a boulder from going through, and possibly a BB also, it'll prevent.
Good. Now, what about my, one of my favorite schools, the Gilmet, that had numerous problems when I was there?
That is one of the first schools we're looking at.
And what, and...
The broken windows?
Not the broken windows. The water that was coming in from the third floor, which they've had a problem ever since in that school, I was telling you about it. Is there any water coming in?
Not as of right now, no.
Okay, but they did have water coming in?
There was a few roof leaks that have been resolved.
And, and, Mr. Molino, if I'm not mistaken, that school had to be closed twice for mold problems and other problems twice, and it wasn't even ten years of age, which you, you or the, uh, Mr. Riley have nothing to do with it. The shoddiness of the workers, uh, that's why I think clerk of the works is so important. I don't know this gentleman, but I don't think he did his job. And thank you and Mr. Riley for doing the best you can, but I wanted to alert you to that, uh, situation.
Other questions from the school committee for facilities?
Um, when it comes to plowing, do we handle that, or is that a city, essentially like the city gives us plowing for free kind of thing?
The city technically handles the plowing, but we assist them. Um, we do a majority of the plowing. Um, the city, their priority is the streets, of course. Uh, then after the streets are done, they hit the school yards. Uh, we currently have started plowing all of our school yards, um, and our sidewalks.
And pricing on that, it, I know that the, the city side of it can es- essentially deficit you, use for the, so, what is it for you guys?
Correct. Uh, this last storm cost us $4,868. Uh, that was storm as, uh, snow, it was moved on a Sunday, so that would be time and a half.
Do, do we have any kind of, um, way to get that money back from the state at all? Or is that just a, good luck, that's how much money it cost you?
It's pretty much built into the budget for the most part. Um, you know, we, if it, the storm falls on a Tuesday, and we have all our staff in, um, it's pretty much the staff's job to do. Uh, being on a Sunday, uh, we have to remove it because of the weather, you know, if it freezes, you don't want it to freeze, especially with these cold temperatures we've had. So, that would be a overtime storm. So, when we build a budget, we build it into the budget, um, so we have that money available.
This is typically the DPW, the city side's of the house responsibility in their budgeting. But, um, given the attrition that's taken place, uh, in that department, uh, the school department has been picking up a lot of that work.
Thank you.
Chris, um, just a quick question. Again, thank you for coming and, um, filling us in on all the facilities here. Um, near and dear to my heart, the Leahy School. When I retired, we, the second floor was leaking...
Yes.
Pretty badly with rainstorms. Has that roof been addressed?
It has. Um, the roofing contractor has been out on a weekly basis. Um, we've repaired many of the roofs. Um, we still have a few minor leaks. The roofing company will be out here, actually, this Thursday, uh, to address the rest. Uh, we have a contract in place, and, uh, it's an ongoing process.
Now, what about the scraping of the ceilings and the painting of the classrooms? Is that going to happen down the road, or...
Well, as you're aware, um, there is 2.3 million square feet of interior space. Um, we are working on many schools' painting, um, and that work is in process. And on vacations, we're taking advantage as much as we can to paint.
Thank you.
Final questions for Mr. Molino?
No. Actually, I got to say, once again, thank you for the hard work you got, you and your crew are doing in fixing the schools. And I know I probably became more of a nightmare for you every time I call you. Sometimes I probably, I think I've woken you up at night, as well as the superintendent for things I needed to get done. And I really want to recommend you for, um, commend you for all the stuff that you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Molino. Final questions from the school committee before we move to public participation?
Um, for the, the meetings that, that we're going to have for the Oliver School and possibly before that, eight thirty AM seems a bit, um, inconvenient for parents, I feel. Is, is, is it possible to make sure we have a, a meeting for, if we do one of the clusters, have it later in the evening?
Well, uh, you know, it, it's funny, I had the exact same question. Apparently, uh, when talking to the principal over there, those are the standing meetings that the PTA set themselves, so that's when a lot of parents come, probably when they're dropping their kids off. Uh, with that said, because we're going to look at other options, I think an evening option would be, uh, you know, highly conducive to what we're trying to get done as well.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to the public participation portion. Mr. Vittorioso, you're first.
Thank you, Mr. Riley.
We do have several members speaking today. Remember, we do have a few minutes for everyone.
Thank you, sir, for that reminder. Uh, I want to apologize for missing the last meeting, but it seems Lawrence General Hospital and myself are becoming good friends. I wanted to thank the Pathem School children, the Wetherby School children, the Hennessy School children. They gave lots of bottles to Lazarus House. At least they considered the elderly and those that can't help themselves. Now, Mr. Riley had brought up about the problem they had with this nutty guy in Connecticut. I, uh, I think this is the topic that needs to be rehashed. I think it's a problem. I know several years ago, I wanted to have, uh, installed, you walk through the high school, you walk through monitors. It was like I had killed a child. There was outrage from the administration. How dare you question our kids? Ladies and gentlemen, all kids are not good, okay? You have some bad kids. I'm not a parent, but I can say that. Now, I was reading this chart of offenses, and I won't mention the names, but I want to go through some. I think there are problems in this school. Weapons offense, assaults on a teacher, assaults on a student, disturbing a school assembly. You know, I don't go to the schools, but I think we do have problems, and what I'm afraid of is someone getting hurt. It, I know I have no power. I wish I had told the commissioner they had done with another states. They just throw the school committee out, and we go down, have a few beers instead of meeting. But we, I realize we have no power, but there are problems in our school system with students who are disrupted, and the students who want to hurt other students. Again, I apologize for not making the, uh, meeting for Christmas. I do wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year's, and, uh, let's hope that the Congress does not tax us into a new planet. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vittorioso. Mr. Mali?
Good evening, honorable member of the Lawrence School Committee. When Honorable Mayor Lantigua went to Commissioner Chester to save our 13,000 students, since arrival of the Superintendent Riley, his, the slogan has been "Moving Forward, Lawrence Public School." Every day had been positive changes. We, as a citizen, see our teacher, our most important part of the turnaround plan. Now, our city, our public school need support of our teachers. We cannot allow a few high-paid principals blame everything as far as a slowness of the turnaround plan on our teachers. Has been a historical, a strong bond between our citizen and our teachers. We need support our teachers. There was, before Superintendent Riley, there was a lack of the community involvement in Lawrence Public School. Now, in the era of the turnaround, we need support our teachers. Teachers ca- could walk in any classroom that believed there is no job security and no support. May the new year be the year of the great accomplishment for our Lawrence Public School in the era of the receivership and turnaround plan. Our message to our teachers is we are behind you. The teachers in our public school need feel, be a part of the, our, our, our community. When the people from the central office go to the classroom, our teachers not to feel intimidated, but they need their support. Let's move forward, Lawrence Public School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mali. Iritza Rizzo?
Good evening, all. Um, the reason I'm here is because I am a parent of a seven-year-old, a two-year, uh, second-grade student over at the SES School for Exceptional Studies. And, um, previous, early in December, I had emailed the school committee, um, because I, um, had an incident with my son, who is on the ABA program. He's autistic. And he had an incident at school where he fell down the stairs, um, had a fractured wrist, um, scratches and bruises. Um, and on the day of the incident, I, um, received very little support from the administration over at the SES. There was no teacher, no principal to give me an explanation as to what happened to my son on the day of the incident. I had to wait till Monday to get, um, we, um, a story of what happened. I later on do an investigation. I learned that this was inappropriate, um, it was an inappropriate, um, story which they had provided me. Actually, my son was pushed by another, another child down the stairs. Um, at this point, my concerns are that, and I'm, I'm questioning whether this, um, building, which we're talking about, the old high school building, is an appropriate place for the SES. We have, um, two schools in the building. We have the Oliver School Elementary Kids. We have children with autism and special, and kids with, um, special needs. And we also have, um, high schoolers in the building. Now, my son last year was a first grader, and he was over at the first floor, no issues. Um, and now the kids have been moved up to the third floor. So, my son had fell actually twelve steps down a staircase. Um, I also questioning whether, um, these, both, both of these schools should have one principal. Um, I've seen the lack of support that the teachers receive, uh, from administration, and it's actually a concern to me. I'm very involved, um, in the school and with my son, and that, that is a very, you know, it's a concern to me as a parent, the fact that, um, all these issues are happening over at that building. Um, and we have little ones, um, in the situation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Inez Calzada?
Hello?
Need a translator? Chalima?
Chalima's going to do it.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Inez Calzada. También tengo un estudiante en la escuela SES. Hubo un incidente donde el niño se escapó de la escuela con otro estudiante. Se me avisó, él se escapó durante la hora de la tarde, dos y diez más o menos. Se me avisó veinte minutos después cuando terminé mi trabajo como a las cuatro de la tarde. Todavía no sabían del niño. Se llamó a la escuela y la información que se me dio que ya se le había avisado a la policía y que tenía que esperar.
Uh, her name is Inez Calzado. Um, she's also, she also has a student at SES. Um, there seems to have been an incident where her student... With her, where her... where her son left the school in the afternoon. She was informed 20 minutes after he left the school. And at 4:20 in the afternoon, they still didn't know where her son was.
Mi pregunta es cómo se puede mejorar la seguridad después de la escuela cuando un incidente pasa de esta manera, donde yo pueda comunicarme con alguien en la escuela para saber cómo lidiar con una situación cuando un niño se escapa de la escuela con problemas de emocionales como ADHD y problemas de depresión.
She has questions around how we can better our security and the protocol for reaching out to families to inform them of the situation.
Cómo después de la escuela, después que se termine el horario de la escuela, si el padre llama para tratar de investigar más a fondo, que no se le dé una respuesta, no sabemos, solamente tiene que esperar. Si hay otra manera de cómo ayudar a los padres a tratar de encontrar este niño.
She's also curious to know if there are, if there's a protocol at which she can contact someone after school hours. That seems to have been an issue when she was looking for her son.
Y quiero darle la gracia a Ana Martínez, la cual se me ayudó mucho. Ella hizo unas cuantas llamadas y encontramos al niño alrededor de las ocho de la noche en una situación no muy buena. Y al doctor, perdón, al supervisor, Kevin Clement, que también estuvo envuelto y otros gente que tuvieron ayudándome. Y gracias a esa acción donde Ana Martínez tomó la iniciativa de llamar a otras personas, la cual me ayudaron a encontrar al niño, pero sí, se necesita alguien más aparte del security que está en la escuela. Alguien más que uno pueda llamar después de hora de escuela.
She would like to thank Anna Martínez and Kevin Clement for helping her search for her son. And especially Anna Martínez, who's helped her connect with many folks during that time. They found her son at 8:00 p.m. and he was not in the best state.
Gracias.
Thank you. Damaris Vasquez? Damaris Vasquez?
Hello? Hello? Okay. Good evening. I also have a son at the SES, and he is nine years old. And I'm here to share on how I feel about SES School and how it treated my son. My son is nine years old. He has autism and he has ADHD. My son has, my son has come home with bruises, scratches, pinch marks, burns, and marks that look like whipping on his back. Most of these incidents were never reported to me, not a phone call nor a letter. When my son got burned, when my son got burned, when he got burned, the only thing that I got from the school was a letter stating difficult time. Nobody signed the paper. Nobody called me. Also, I reported the SES twice to DCF, and those two times, the DCF dismissed the case. As they say, it was lack of evidence. I'm not sure what they mean when they say lack of evidence, when I have pictures of my son's bruises and I have my son recorded stating who did what to him, but they brush him off. My son is not attending the SES anymore. I have him at home and I try to homeschool him as best as I can. I did send emails to the mayor, the superintendent's office, the school committee, and I never got a reply back from either, from anybody. I still haven't even got a call from the principal, from the teacher, like, nobody asking how William is doing. You know, with his burns, his marks. I brought him to the doctor. He got second-degree burns. It just, you know, keeps on going, keeps on going, and I couldn't have my son in that school anymore with everything that was going on. So my thing is that SES has a real bad lack of communication, especially that they don't document nothing. They don't call the parents when the incident happens. I have an apology letter from the nurse stating, you know, she's sorry that this happened. You know, it just keeps on going, so on and so forth with all these apologies. And I think enough is enough with these kids because they think that they have autism, like my son. He has some communication skills that they could just, you know, brush them off and it's like, whatever. He doesn't know what he's saying. And right now, I'm just struggling with finding a better school for him, and that's it. I just have him home right now. And basically, he's really not getting the education that he needs right now because of lack of communication with SES and everything that went on with him. Thank you.
Before you leave, actually, I'm gonna break protocol for a second. When did you take him out of school and when did the incident happen?
The first, he had three incidents. The first incident happened in May of 2012. Second incident happened November 8th, 2012. Third incident happened December 5th, 2012. And I took him out of school in the middle of December of 2012.
Now, I don't know about any other school committee, I never received an email from you, but it's something that we will, I know I will be looking into, especially as getting help for you and your child.
Yeah, I really, I really do need it, especially that he's not getting, you know, he's home with me, and that's not education for him.
Right.
No, we didn't have a team meeting. Yes, and we still haven't done anything. I went to the school for an IEP meeting, and the IEP meeting took two minutes because everybody went in there with an attitude, because they know that they did wrong. And they all stood up. One of the teachers stood up, one of his teachers stood up and said, "We are done here because we all need a vacation." It's like, you need a vacation? You know, it's, it was, when I went to the, because it wasn't a team meeting, it was an IEP meeting. And we were supposed to have a team meeting, and we never did. And what happened was I met with Celine, Celine Doucette for the IEP meeting, and we both agreed to find William a better school. And I'm still waiting. You know, no phone calls or nothing. And the thing that gets me more, more upset is the principal hasn't even called, you know? He doesn't even have the, like, he could just pick up the phone and say, "Damaris, how's William doing?" You know, just asks, "How is he doing?" And they don't, they don't call us, like, they don't care, you know? Especially with, especially the burns. What is a toaster oven doing in a class with kids that have mental, mental disability, you know, problems that are not capable to, to, I guess they were baking or something like that? But if I don't bake with him at home and I don't let him touch the oven, why should they do that in class?
Thank you, Ms. Vasquez. We're gonna have Ms. Bergeron work with you after this to continue to make sure.
And please give me a form as to what's going on.
Ms. Javier, Anna Javier?
Good evening, Mr. Riley, members of the school committee, staff that is in the room and parents as well. My name is Anna Javier, and I am the president of newly formed organization Parent Leaders in the Merrimack Valley. I am a parent of four high school students in a high school campus. I've been inactive and an involved parent since my oldest, that is now in college, entered Lawrence Public Schools. I stand before you tonight because ever since our first kickoff event back in October, we have been providing workshops to parents and motivating them to be advocate, to advocate and to, and to be a voice for their children. For the past few months, we have been aware of many different challenges that our children and youth at the Oliver and the SES School are confronting today. As you have heard this evening, you've heard voices of concerned parents. The last parent that spoke here, I didn't even know her. I had heard of her. Someone actually called me and told me about her situation, and I asked her to come here tonight because I think these are issues that need to be addressed to every one of you. I worked very closely with Yaritza Rizzo, who stood here tonight. I worked very closely with Inez Calzada, who stood here tonight. The night that her son went out of the school, it was really unfortunate, the experience that I had because I went over to her house, and when I went over there, she was speaking to safety officer who was not providing her with the right resources. I asked him if we can get a copy of the report of the incident that happened. He said he didn't have one. He said he couldn't continue basically speaking to us because the staff had left the building and there was nobody else that, there to help her. So therefore, I took the initiative and drove with her to, to the high school because I knew there were safety officers there. Safety officer was kind enough to contact Kevin Clement. Kevin Clement got involved. And thank God, you know, I mean, we had a lot of people, people from church searching for the kid because the, her son had never done something like this before. So it was very, we were very worried. And to me, it was so different because Lawrence Public Schools is used to that when something happens in that magnitude. In the past, I have seen where we used to have officers that used to help at least go search for the kids or at least provide the parents with information, but that didn't happen. I thank Kevin Clement because I know after we contacted him, you know, he got involved and we were able to find him safe, thank God. But this is a very big concern to hear these parents. These are only a few of the parents that have come here tonight. We, I have spoken to many other parents that are concerned. They have told me about a gun being found in the school ground about two and a half months ago, they said. There was a parent that went. She literally saw the gun when they, you know, lifted it up. And all that type of situation is going on, and I just think it's very important that we bring this forward. I think it's, it's time for us to take a look at what is really happening in that building. We have little ones as old as six years old going up to, I don't know, we have different age groups there. I believe we have over 22 years old, right? Yep. So therefore, I think it's, it's something that we need to address, especially with the topic that Mr. Vittorioso was speaking about tonight, with the incident that happened in Connecticut that has happened in other communities. We don't want to wait for something to happen in that building in order to do something. I think it's time, you know, we need to act on this. And, you know, I thank the parents that came forward tonight. And I really, I know it's hard for them. Many times, they, they send emails, you know, they tell me, "No one has answered me back. I don't know what to do." And I just hope that if we really do want to continue building that family engagement, it's not enough for us to say, "Oh, we, we have family engagement in the school. We're doing this." And when we're not really having that contact with the families, we're not providing them with the right resources. I think that, you know, there's a lot that we can do as a system, and there's a lot that we can do for these parents. And most importantly, we're all in this because of the children and the youth of our city. Thank you.
That concludes the public participation portion of this meeting tonight. That concludes the meeting. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, sir.